The disbursement of care funds. So there were a number of projects that we had brought to council, everything from the doors at the library to the cardiac monitors. Those were not contained in the budget. And this budget amendment will allocate the funds to those budget categories. All of those expenditures are going to be reimbursed through the cares funds that we're receiving from the county. And again, that will mean that in terms of the budget, there will be no impact to the fund balance at the end of the year. So if anybody has any questions on the budget amendment.
Comments from council? Any comments from the audience? Motion to close the hearing?
No move.
Second?
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first hearing is closed. Second hearing is the 2021 Peters Township Budget and Capital Improvement Program.
So each year council and the township staff investing considerable amount of time and effort in developing a budget that prudently allocates limited financial resources in a manner that's designed to best serve the needs and desires of the community. The budget process is defined and guided by the Peters Township Home Charter. It's also a reflection of long-term planning initiatives such as the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Comprehensive Recreation Plan. It draws from input from standing advisory boards and staff and residents, but most importantly, it contains the insight and contributions of the Peters Township Council, which are expressed not only at the budget workshops that we have, but you know, we spend the year listening to what council has to say about what the priorities of the community are and the budget as it's drafted reflects that. You know, I think the thing, when we talk about the budget, what residents, the first question always is, is there a tax increase contained within this budget? And there is not. The property tax level will remain the same in 2021 as it is now. Having said that, and regardless of what action council takes on projects for the upcoming year, I would anticipate that in, at this time next year, we will be proposing a property tax increase. It'll be a modest increase, but I believe an increase will be required. But having said that, this year, we do not. The other thing that people always ask about is what types of changes are occurring with regard to staffing? We are not proposing any increases in staffing. We are proposing to take a position that currently exists in the library and transition it from a part-time position to a full-time position. And in doing so, although it will not offset the cost of having a full-time employee, we will offset a portion of that by reducing part-time hours that exist inside the library. What is on the screen is a summary of the proposed budget. And as you can see, the expenditures significantly higher than the revenues. What that is a reflection of is the fact that the townships will be expending borrowed funds, the money from the 2019 bond issue that were borrowed for the purposes of constructing Phase One of Rolling Hills Park. Those monies will be expended. And then in addition to that, this budget assumes that we'll be borrowing additional funds for the construction of the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center. And at least a portion of that project would be completed next year. Our revenue sources are what you would expect to see in most municipalities. The principal sources of revenue are divided between tax revenues and other non-tax revenues. Real estate tax and earned income tax represent 56% of the total budget. To the extent that we can identify services that we offer and associate a fee with that, we also do that as well, that 15% that shows there for fees, a large portion of that represents the fees associated with the collection and disposal of garbage and recycling. The transfer tax is budgeted once again at $1,600,000. We believe that to be a conservative estimate. Even in this year where there were some challenges at the second quarter, we have more than made up for that. And in all likelihood, transfer taxes this year will slightly exceed $1,800,000. So we feel very comfortable with that number. In terms of expenditures, what you see here is not what you would normally see in a Peters Township budget. You see that a significant portion is dedicated to parks and recreation. And again, what that's a reflection of is the capital expenditures associated with the development of the Rolling Hills property. You know, in terms of normal operating expenditures, public safety and public works are the most significant portion of our initiatives. And the public safety component here includes not only police, fire, or contribution to the ambulance service, but it also includes the planning department. This year, the split between operating and capital budget, 56% of the expenditures relate to the operation of the township, 44% relate to the capital projects. Of those capital projects, oh, excuse me. In terms of operating expenditures, here's where you begin to see the commitment that the township has to the basic services of the municipality. And that's why you see 27% of the budget committed to public safety and 25% of the budget committed to public works. Terms of capital projects, again, the most significant of these are occurring inside the recreation department. There is a considerable sum of money budgeted for public works projects. The bulk of that is money related to the road program and the maintenance of storm sewers. One of the things that we want to discuss with council is to look at upgrading some mini-maintenance roads as part of this year's road improvement program. So the two large projects that are included in the capital budget, the first is Phase One of the Rolling Hills Park project. As councils aware, we have let the bid for this first phase, which includes opening up the area by constructing the loop road through Rolling Hills Park and also developing picnic pavilions and shelters, as well as a maintenance building that will be needed to maintain the park. The second capital project involves the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. This is the most recent rendering of what that facility would look like. Although this is included in the budget, as we have discussed previously, to move ahead with this project, we'll take action by council at the point in time when we decide to take this out to bid and potentially award a bid. If we are to move ahead with this project, we will be, it will require that we in fact issue a bond issue to be able to cover that expense. I don't know if council has any questions with regard to that presentation. There were a number of people who wrote in comments that I would like to read into the So let me do that. This first one is from John McCarthy at 105 Green Fire Drive. "I'm not in favor of spending money on an aquatics facility. I'm not thrilled that money was spent on a study for this. Fire station's a good idea. Improvements to Rolling Hills Park can be done further and in the future. Seniors and fixed-income residents should not be saddled with paint for a pool at this time. Be conservative with taxpayers' monies. Parents can take their kids other places to swim." The second comment is from Joanne and John Moore at 114 Green Fire Drive. "We support the bond issue for a new fire station. Given our COVID-19 world, we do not support a bond issue, even if interest rates are low for an aquatics facility. We realize how hard you have all worked on this and varying opinions of council and of the community." There's another comment from Wendy Bowes of 148 Friar. "It is not right to begin a capital project assuming one-third more than it received in a year and not have the road infrastructure in place first. The Friar Lane Turning Lane Expansion was a condition for the nursing home needs addressed before the disdue recreation pool area at Rolling Hills. Township projected income is likely lower due to COVID, so this is not the year to be thinking of a pool expenditure, particularly with a massive increase in private home pools built in 2020. Ask the pool business whether they are swamped. Not only do we need roads in place first, but it doesn't make sense to budget pools/recreation when there are uncertainties in jobs and uncertain governor and presidential policies." This is a letter from Ron Silva. "I'd like to take this opportunity to register my opposition to the planned aquatics facility." And this was originally written to Mrs. Merrill. "I support your opposition to the same." And then finally, this is from William and Lucy Shope. "Since we're unable to attend the meeting this evening, we are submitting our thoughts to council with consideration. We wish to express our concern about the 2021 budget. Using the information on the PT website, expenditures have exceeded revenues each year since 2016. The proposed budget for 2021 shows a deficit of $13,334,703. In addition, the data shows an annual decline in revenues each year since 2016 and are projected to decline in 2021. Budget proposals by approximately $2 million. Please explain how it is a sustainable trend without continually increases in taxes further explain the wisdom of an exorbitant recreational capital expenditure under these circumstances." The one thing I would say is that the budget in front of you is in fact a balanced budget. And I understand when you look at the chart, you see expenditures exceeding revenues. But again, that's a reflection of the fact that the township has borrowed funds, which it will be expending in 2021. That's all I have. I, you may have some comments.
Comments from council?
Do one of that audience first.
I'll take council first, then we'll go to the audience.
Mr. Lawrie had asked, when we were in the workshop here, right, we put a lot of time into things and we were looking at numbers. And some of the projected or requests from the department heads that were in the workshop figures are now different in the finalized budget. I don't want you necessarily to try to regurgitate, but you've obviously massaged some of those numbers a bit, some things up, some things down.
Yeah, well, I can say one of the things that happens, it's an ongoing process, and Ryan and I meet together to talk about these and adjust them. We do so in consultation with department heads. So at this point, Ryan and I are fairly comfortable with the numbers that you see in the budget. But even as of today, having talked to Ms. Love in the library, there may be some minor adjustments.
I have some concerns about the budget. First of all, my experience years ago was involved in a budgeting process, millions of dollars in the hospital industry, out of state. One thing that we concluded was that we needed to justify virtually the existence of every department. That meant we measured efficiency. I don't think Peters Township has ever gotten into the business of measuring departmental efficiency. I would strongly suggest that you require department heads to justify not only their existence, but the existence of the individuals in their department and the budgets that they demand. One thing that I have concerns about is the potential for a tax increase. Let me speak to that for a minute. I don't care what your political beliefs are, but I think within the next year and a half, and I'm willing to wager on this, we will see a very big drop in the national income. In other words, we are going to face a deficit situation bordering perhaps on a depression rather than a recession. And again, I'm willing to wager that at least we'll have a recession. Now, in our particular situation, we have had a decrease in income due to, among other things, the drop in the price of natural gas. There's a lot of shell oil, shell gas money in this township, and that has decreased. And we haven't had a mechanism to make up for it, have we? I don't think so. There's other things, too. I'd like to see a cost-benefit ratio down on the aquatic center. Whether you're for it or against it, it should be able to be justified, and I haven't seen enough justification. Finally, with respect to the aquatic center, in thinking about it, it would be, and I affirm this, and I defy you to make a reasonable argument against it. I think it would be financially more appropriate to pay for annual admissions to the St. Clair Pool and Rec Center than it would be for us to build our own. It's less expensive to pay somebody to swim in St. Clair than it is to build them a pool. And I say that based upon the information that I know from St. Clair. Peters Township will not be able to compete financially, price-wise, with the prices that are offered by St. Clair to individuals outside the community. Again, I would ask you to examine not only the aquatic center and its need and its costs, but also require that we institute a program to measure departmental efficiency within local government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me change your name. I'm sorry?
TD, your name and address. The stenographer, your name and address, right here.
Oh, Ron Brooks, 855 Bebott Road.
Did you spell your last name?
I'm sorry?
Did you spell your last name?
B double O C K S. Thank you.
Any other comments, audience, council? Motion to close the hearing?
No move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearings are closed. Stenographer is finished. And next item is approval of the minutes from the council meeting of November 9th.
No move.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special reports, COVID update.
Given what we've been hearing on the news and with activity with regard to COVID, both Chief McLaughlin and I thought it might be an appropriate time to have a conversation with council about where we are.
Thanks, Mr. Lawre. So when we finished meeting in the springtime, a lot of us had expected a fall or a pre-winter resurgence. That being the case, this wasn't really unexpected for what we're going through now. However, one of the initiatives that's driving this might be COVID fatigue and what we're experiencing as human beings, paying attention to something for a total of nine months. It gets to be old news after a while. And I really think, based upon a lot of the statistics that Allegheny County is pushing out, that such might be the case. Obviously, moving things indoors, events that were outdoors weeks ago, making them indoors is going to obviously boost those numbers as well. But one of the big things I think that governments are going to try to overcome is just COVID fatigue and trying to get people back into the mindset that we're heading into a bad spot with COVID. That being the case, we, things have been fairly good for us as a community. With the disaster declaration in place, we've been receiving money from cares funding, and we've also been making emergency purchases with said money. Our status on PPE has increased significantly since the last time we've spoken. Our N95 mask numbers have become a place where we're extremely comfortable to handle this next resurgence. We continue to support administration and all the supplies needed throughout the township to support its various programs. With trends and projections, not all news is bad. As we see daily cases increase to a very high level, higher than they were in May, the average deaths per day still remains lower. So more people are fighting off the disease, the healthier ones are doing fairly well. The increased risk to pre-hospital care workers, first responders, EMS, fire, police is a significant issue coming into this next resurgence. We experienced this firsthand in the fire department, where one of our employees has been diagnosed with COVID-19. Through contact tracing, much as the same as the school district has been doing, we've determined that the individual was not inside of the station during their infectious portion of pre-symptoms. Be it as it may, this created a somewhat of a scare for us within the fire department and the realization that wiping out our workforce is probably the most inherent risk for us as a community at this point in time. Keeping our workforce extremely healthy and in a positive manner mentally and physically is an extreme importance on my priority list. We have seen a large uptick in COVID-positive cases in the field, meaning contacting COVID-positive patients, again, to be expected with our PPE the way that it is, decont procedures. Pre-hospital and hospital care workers are getting COVID-19 a lot, but they're getting it from outside of their work facilities. They're contact tracing back to social events, parties, things like that, because they're protected inside of the workforce. That's not to say all are the case. There are workers contracting this in the field, and that we're trying to be extremely careful about. We also have more information on how the disease has been spread since the springtime. Original thoughts were that it was just the droplets that could only travel six feet, but now data shows that this is airborne and can travel more than six feet and remain in rooms. Therefore, having the need for masks much more now than we have then. That's all I have. If council has any questions for me at this time.
Questions?
The other thing that I wanted to talk about was a little bit about what we're doing as an organization here. As Chief McLaughlin indicated, right now, we have one individual who is off as a result of COVID. We've been really fortunate, and I think one of the reasons why we've been fortunate is that the workforce here has taken this seriously and it's done a good job in terms of protecting themselves and their fellow workers. And hopefully, that will continue. In the spring, we separated people as they reported to work in the public works department and in the police department. I think as, if the situation continues as it is right now, I think we're going to resort back to that again and have shifts reporting to different locations so that if in fact we have a problem, we don't lose the entire department. You know, this formula has worked for our neighbors to the north. One municipality has lost seven police officers at one time, but didn't lose their entire department because they reported as a group. Another public works department, using the same strategy, lost four of their public works employees, but not the entire department. One of the things that we're going to also be doing is we started discussions with North Durban. We want to strike a deal with North Durban that if in fact we have a problem within either of those public works departments, that makes it difficult or impossible for the municipality to be able to maintain roads in the wintertime, that we share resources. So we began that discussion and between the public works directors and the manager's office, we hope to be able to strike some simple handshake deal by how we're going to do this. In a light fashion, Chief Grimes has reached out to North Durban and Cecil Township for that same kind of support in case any of the three municipalities suffer a loss of employees inside the police department that would render any of the municipalities unable to deliver police services. Inside the library, I don't know whether you've paid attention to this or not, but the, in Allegheny County, every library at this point has gone back to curbside delivery of services. The thing about libraries are it not only attracts, in our case, 250, 300 people a day, but you have people who then use the library as a place to sit and read and that. And there's a real concern from Ms. Love that, and the library staff with regard to this. And what she is recommending, and I support, is that at least until the beginning of the year, that we once again go back to doing curbside delivery of books and continuing the virtual programming that we have been doing. So I don't know if any council has any questions or comments about that.
Would that be something that would happen soon, or are you talking?
Next Monday.
So, okay, because they're closed for some of the holiday weekend, but then Monday.
Yes, well, and they need to get set up to do this again. So the other one that I just want to reaffirm that, and we have talked, I talked to council about this previously, that, you know, our recreation programs, and one of the things we have been doing is paying attention to what's happening in the school district. And when the school district determines that there is a problem with COVID in a particular age group, we have been suspending our recreation programs that service that age group over the time that the school is not open. And it's my intention to continue to do that when the closures are related to the spread of COVID within that age group. And I just want to make sure that we're still on the same page.
So then pretty much all of youth activities are going to be shut down as of?
Well, no, because as I understand what's happening in the school district, it isn't necessar, what is happening with this shutdown isn't necessarily tied to cases inside the school currently. And as a result of that, I don't think that it makes sense to suspend those activities. It will, it, some of them may be challenged because when the schools shut down, they also suspend all permits. So if in fact any of our youth programs rely on those facilities, they may not be able to get in there, so.
I'm sorry, I don't think I understand what you just said. For example, the high school right now is on remote.
Yes, and in that particular case, in the high school case, as I understand it, there are cases that are causing them to do this. I think there's a real concern at the school district about what's coming up as a result of the holidays that are coming up and what that means for staff. are, that are coming up and what that means for staff and families of students traveling and what impact that has on them. So.
I mean, right now, what school, the only school I'm aware that's actually attending is Bauer Hill.
And none of them will be after Thanksgiving.
Right. So.
There's like a 12-day period in there that between, because there's a really extended winter break this year.
Sure.
Because of the moving.
So, so, so then just clarify again, please. Are you saying that once schools close, not a direct program will be going on?
When schools close as a result of children being ill, I'm recommending that we shut down recreation programs.
We will know if kids are ill, though.
Oh, we will, because the school district continues to monitor that.
Assuming that people report that.
Oh, and it's always been that way. That's, that's, that's the whole thing about the entire, the entire thing with regard to COVID. It is, you know, it's, well, you know, one of the questions we just recently had for all of our employees, are you leaving the area for, for Thanksgiving? And, you know, I was pleased to find out the vast majority of people intend to have Thanksgiving here. But I also, you know, you're totally dependent upon people sharing information with you that they're not required to share. So.
So the rec center is also requiring masks all the time now?
Yes. State of Pennsylvania requires masks of inside all facilities, including by athletic participants. In the school district, having spoken with Dr. French, that's a condition of their preference now. But if you're in their building, you're wearing a mask, whether you're engaged in simply going to class or you're going to participate in an athletic event.
I just find it ironic that they're not confident in having the kids come together during the spring, for the actual Thanksgiving. We trust all the factors.
I, I kind of feel the way Gary does. I mean, they're talking, they're pointing to a lot of these cases as being because people don't practice the same precautions in school, at home, as they do in school. So I guess we'll see what happens.
Hey, Paul, do we disinfect the police vehicles in between shifts?
Oh, we will be very shortly. Yes, we were, but we will be, we've actually purchased electrostatic spreader so that we can, in fact, do all equipment that people are occupying.
I would think that would be a big spreader of COVID. Everybody's touching the same N dash.
Actually, it's not, touch is not a, not a spreader.
Really?
So I guess related to police, because the schools are closed, are the resource officers back on shift?
When the schools are closed, the resource officers come back and work, work here. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is an introduction by Chief Grimes.
Two masked bandits coming in. Greetings, chief.
So I'd just like to introduce you to Mallory Jarzinka. Officer Jarzinka is currently a resident of Nottingham Township where she resides with her husband. She grew up in the North Hills. After graduating from North Hills High School, she earned her bachelor's degree in criminology and investigations in 2009 from WVU. Prior to her career in law enforcement, she worked in a group home with youth. That serves her well to this day. In 2013, she began her career with the University of Pittsburgh Police Department where she was a member of the department's Community Relations Unit, Bicycle Unit, and the Crisis Negotiation Team. As a member of the Community Relations Unit, she was responsible for the coordination of their citizens' police academy, various community events that include Special Olympics, polar plunge, the torch run, community block parties, National Night Out, coffee with a cop, and bicycle safety presentations for children. In addition to being a part of multiple specialized units, she was the PPCT Sexual Harassment and Rape Prevention Instructor where she taught members of the community crime victim prevention, awareness, and self-defense. She holds certifications in Safari Land Defensive Tactics Instructor, the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, Police Physical Fitness Coordinator, and she's with the Allegheny County Department of Human Services and the City of Pittsburgh Police Crisis Intervention Team, and the U.S. Department of Justice, FBI Counterimprovised Explosion Device Unit Post-Blast Investigations. So I'd just like to introduce to you our newest officer, Mallory Jarzinka.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Very pleased to have her with us, and I think she'll do a lot of great things here in Peterstown.
Mrs. Jarzinka, I feel symbiotic relationship. I also migrated north to south and crossed the river. So.
Not too many of us.
Not too many of us. So, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you for coming in.
Boy, you're not done yet, chief.
Don't stay right.
Okay, next item, we're going to talk about thefts from cars in Peterstown.
So we're not unique in this. In fact, I was just reading a message that came by email to me before I came to the meeting, and they're experiencing this all over western Pennsylvania. This most recent one occurred up at the, near the South Hills Village. It is just a continuous battle. And so capturing these people has become quite difficult. They're, in many cases, transient, in some cases, as far away as Florida. And they just travel, much like the old terminology, gypsies travel, and as they travel, they commit these acts. That's not always the case, but it is in some instances. But as they travel, they're breaking into cars, stealing things. So we took the tact of trying to educate our public on what to do to try to prevent it. And along with this video that I think we're going to show, we also took to, I gotta start it. We also took to going out and putting flyers, at Mr. Lauer's suggestion, actually, on people's vehicles while they're parked in our parks and along the trail.
Some areas of the country have reported increases as high as 67% of thefts from motor vehicles. Theft from motor vehicles is when property is stolen from inside a vehicle. In our area, we continue to see increases in thefts from year to year. There are two common traits that make it easy for the thieves, valuables left in plain sight inside a vehicle, and people who are unaware of their surroundings. When it comes to theft from a motor vehicle, many people make it even easier for the thief by not locking their car. It's important to lock your car even when your car is parked in your driveway at your own home. Over the past several years, we've taken reports on stolen computers, purses, cash, cell phones, briefcases, and even guns, all of them stolen from cars parked in people's driveways, at the mall, along the trail, or even in one of our parks. In many cases, the victim made it an easy target by leaving the items visible and in their unlocked car. So the Peterstown Police Department strongly recommends that you lock your junk in your trunk. If you must leave items of value in your car, regardless of where you're parked, we strongly recommend these rules. When possible, park in a well-let area. Always lock your car, even in your own driveway. Avoid leaving valuables such as tablets, computers, purses, shopping bags, cell phones, and briefcases visible in your car. Always be aware of your surroundings when parking or even when returning to your car. Always have your keys or your key fob in hand as you approach your vehicle. Avoid distractions like talking or texting on your cellphone. And when possible, carry a small purse or a backpack that can be worn close to your body on the trail or in the store or in one of our parks. So again, remember, the Peterstown Police Department strongly recommends, if you must leave valuables in your car, lock your junk in your trunk.
Very nice.
So that was, that was a large part Kelsey. She's a tremendous asset to the community, to the township. And we put together the script, and then she shot all the video. She did a great job. We're working on, we just finished another one for the exchange zone, and then we're going to work collaboratively with the fire department on their next one, which will be, Ms. Merrill, you'll be happy to hear this one, when to call 911. Because we still fight that issue. So.
Nicely done.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, I do have, by way of some residents, for visitors that will be in the township with out-of-state license plates. Are we proposing to take any action to, because I'm hearing them, oh, do we need to back into the driveway so they can't see the plates?
No, we will not be doing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Would you, would you lock my car on the way out? Okay, audience comments on other stuff?
There are two other audience comments.
Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, the first item is a resolution amending the Peterstown Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
You're up again.
This is chief night.
I don't know if you want to pose any questions that you may have, but in general, I mean, I can, I think you all got a spreadsheet that addresses the policies and why they were changed. Some are due to legislation, some are due to, for example, the new weapons that we got, we changed the policy to accommodate the fact that it was different weapons. If you want me to address any specific one, I can certainly do so.
I would just say that chief was kind enough to answer a few questions I had, just not, just general context questions. Thank you for that before the meeting.
I do have a question. Some of these things are apparently, at least it seems to me, are up on the website. And I'm not so sure it's a very good idea to put police policy on a website.
And it's, the chief discussed that with me prior to the meeting. We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm surprised I didn't think of that.
Okay.
Thank you again for your work.
Approve the resolution amending the Peterstown Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
A favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Pose. Okay. Next item is the use of the community room.
Mr. Cozer had asked if we placed this on the agenda for the purpose of discussing the use of the community room. Community room, which is located in the back of the police station, is used by the Park and Rec Department as well as the police department, and has been done so for over 16 years. And I guess this is probably one where Chief Grimes and I disagree, but that's okay. I always think that public spaces are best when they're in use. And I think if, if what you do is to simply turn this over and restrict its use to only the police department, those recreational programs that it serves may not find a new home. The fact of the matter is that in the 16 years that it's been this way, there has never been an incident with regard to the security. And if, and if we need to do more, like alarm the door and things like that, we, we can do that. The other thing that I would point out is that no one, the police department or the rec department, has ever had a problem programming that area. It's been available for, for both when it is needed. You know, the fact of the matter is, the police department more often than not needs it during the day, and there are not normally recreation programs scheduled in that space during the day. But how we get used is totally up to you, and that's, that's a decision for you to make. I will tell you, one of the things that I do believe is it may well be that we're, over the winter months, that we aren't going to program it for recreation because it's my intention to have the police department split its shifts, and one of the places they would be reporting to is that community room. So. Need some kind of motion for muscle in this? Whatever it is you want to do.
What type of programs use that space?
Oh, there's a cooking class that's in there. We get groups in there who rent the space for, for meetings. There's actually a dog obedience class that meets in there.
It's actually a very nice site for small, when people were allowed to have parties.
Yes.
Because it has a kitchen area and a counter and, you know, it's, it's, I've been at events there. I think it's nice. Now, we use it for polling this house?
Well, and that's one thing I was going to say is that regardless of what council wants to do, if you want to restrict this for police use, the one exception should be is that it remain a polling place. It really worked out well. That space accommodated that community activity extremely well, and, and certainly adequate parking, and there's easy ADA accessibility to that space as well as restrooms. So, so regardless of whether council wants to restrict it, the one thing I think you should do is leave the polling place at that location. Is there any consideration being given at the new aquatic center for any public meeting places or anything? There is, within the buildings there, there will, there will not be. But I think one of the things that quite frankly will be available and a tremendous community asset is the meeting spaces that are going to be created within the high school. And, you know, one of the things, once they get their feet kind of on the ground, we need to be having discussions with them about access to those spaces.
Chief, would you like to speak to what the police would like to use that for?
If I could, I actually have written up various reasons why we would want that. The first and foremost, these are bold written points, I can address them in more detail. But it's safety, officer safety. And in this day and age, it's not beyond somebody to stage themselves inside that facility and create an issue. And there are, that's just the beginning of it. We went at great expense, Paul said we could do more, but to create the front half of that building much more secure and putting, I don't want to say too much in the public what we did, but we secured the front part of that building. But in that building is not always a police officer. And so when that's being rented out, that opens up the building for anybody to try to gain access. And all that keeps them is good sense, hopefully lawfulness, and a wooden door and a drop ceiling. Inside that building are guns, tasers, thousands and thousands of dollars worth of other equipment, body worn cameras and the light, and then drugs, and the property room, the evidence room. Some of the other things that we deal with from time to time, you know, we talked about the dog training class. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were interviewing, interrogating someone. That class was ongoing, and the dogs, you could hear the dogs in the room barking as we're trying to conduct police business. You know, the room is used pretty routinely for debriefings and briefings for the SWAT team or any type of activity that we do in relation to some of our investigations. We try to use it for that. We use it for training. As Paul had alluded to, when we divided the station for COVID protocol, that was one of the locations that we used, and we need to be able to leave certain types of gear there in that room. There's criminal history record information throughout the police department, and investigative reports, there's personnel information, internal investigations, and reports that are there in filing cabinets. And that, that would, you know, that causes me concerned that they are not 100% secure. By JNet protocols, the judicial justice network, they have certain requirements, and we get audited routinely. We just went through an audit from the Attorney General's Office. One of their questions was, how secure is your building? And then, of course, we always address that. And that's always a concern for them. We went through the accreditation process. The accreditation managers who assess our building and our accreditation. our building and our accreditation standards, one of the things they brought up to Mr. Lauer was the use of that room and access and control of that room. They didn't deny us, but it was a concern that they brought up. And then there are various other things on there, historical issues that I addressed, the personnel matters, and the training, and a whole list of things there for you to read. But if there's anything where you want me to address, I will.
Why were, why was this never raised in the past?
I raised it every year.
Why was it never raised in the past?
Because I think as a, well, first of all, I should say that if Chief Brick were here, he would tell you his preference would be that, when he was here, that be turned over. But quite frankly, it's, it's never been a problem. From the standpoint of there aren't any incidents where there are security breaches, this isn't as though the back door is open and anybody can wander into the space.
I just used that room, Frank. Cozer and I were in there doing some legal related matters, and I had to figure out how to keep the door on, you know, so people couldn't.
It just sounds to me like you guys have evolved and grown to the point where you can utilize the extra space similar to the way that the Fire Department did. We had to make a tough decision to move wheels on wheels out of that facility, so they can install. I guess I'll make a motion that these doors were turning, maybe we move back to the Police Department further use.
I'll second, but I think there needs to be a date. I don't know how far in advance you already have.
Well, I think the programming in the, for the Rec Center goes through the end of the year. I would suggest if we're doing this, that we allow people to complete their programs as long as it doesn't create a COVID problem, in which case we would move them out.
What is Michelle's position on this?
Michelle's preference is that in fact, that the room stay the way it is because it in fact is used for programming. Michelle could not be here tonight. She's had a death in her family, and she's attending to that.
Could I, before we vote, can I just ask another question? There are construction ways to eliminate the problems you've just described. Sound attenuation, take the wall to the ceiling so that throwing up through the ceiling tiles doesn't work, and then securing the door. Have we explored any of that as opposed to completely switching it over and eliminating other use? I'm just wondering.
I have not explored any of that, but I think, again, with House and Stock had indicated, the other issue that we're looking at, I think we're looking at, is the growth. I think the eventual growth of this Police Department, once you put in that hole, the number of incidents that we're going to handle is going to increase, I think relatively significantly. Look at the homes that are being built in the township and the growth of the township. Our incidents continue to escalate and support its numbers. The Police Department is not going to get any smaller, and certainly is absolutely out of room. The evidence room is packed, jammed back. The storage spaces that we do have for the equipment here that we have is absolutely packed. There's nowhere else to look for. So something that has to be built or changed in how we do business.
I think, I think what I heard was that the, it isn't just a question of securing the doors and the noise, it's the fact they actually, they need more space for equipment, for training, for storage, for everything else. They need, they need their space of the room. That's the issue.
So then, if we do agree to this, we need to find another place for B1 to vote?
I would hope that would be the case.
Now, if I hear you saying that you need storage and you need to use that on a daily basis, how will you vacate that space when it's time to vote?
So that room, the closets and stuff on that side will be used by us then for storage? The room will be used as a training room with mats, overhead projectors, or different things that the guys do, their new weapon, using laser. But Chief, I'm asking you one question. Can it be used for a polling place?
Because that's another, that is a necessity, and I just want to know, if we in fact grant you your wish, you know, can we continue to allow the people to vote there? Because they've just been moved once.
And I, I think that's something that we could staff. My biggest concern in regards to security is when that building is not staffed. Yes, it's a police station. That doesn't mean there's a police officer in there 24/7. During polling, there already a police officer in there during that time. So in that instance, we would have to figure out what would make that work. If that's, if that's a necessity.
It's a necessity.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye.
Nay.
Okay. All righty. You got more space. Next item is approval for recording purposes of HFT lot consolidation plan as shown on drawings prepared by JR Gales and Associates dated November 9 for Henry Teichman.
So this is actually, the second time this plan has been in front of council. It was approved in 2017, but it was never recorded. All this plan does is consolidate six lots into one, and it's my recommendation that in fact it again be, be approved. There were conditions set by the Planning Commission. All of those conditions have been met. Move, do we approve for recording purposes the HFT lot consolidation plan as shown on drawings prepared by JR Gales and Associates for Henry Tishman?
Second.
Discussion. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of Juniper Woods Plan of Lots Revised Easement Plan as shown on drawings prepared by Civil and Environmental Consultants dated May 13 for 271 Hartland LLC, Juniper Woods.
So the original plan was approved in 2018 and recorded in June 3 of 2019. As you will recall, earlier this year, there was a revised plan that was brought to council and approved for the purposes of revising the locations of easements in the plan. There was a, this was a result of a need to adjust based upon the actual grading that was done as opposed to that which was shown on the original plan. That plan has not yet been recorded, and since that time, there are additional proposed revisions to the Juniper Woods Plan. One of those revisions is what's shown on here. There are 19 lots that the developer is asking for slight adjustments into the size of the lots based upon proposed homes by, by the builder who's going to be building there. This results in a de minimis change in the amount of dedicated open space. Had in fact this plan been submitted this way, originally, it would have met all of our requirements, and it would have been recommended for approval. The other change is actually at this point where Manor Way will connect on to, into the new plan. There was a revision done that we support that allows this to be constructed while reducing the need for a wall. I don't believe the wall is completely eliminated, but it is, it is significantly smaller than what would have been there. And that's, that's to the township's favor since we'd be maintaining that wall. It's my recommendation that Peters Township approve the Juniper Woods Plan of Lot Revised Easement Plans as shown tonight.
So we're not changing the number of lots, right?
We are not changing the number of lots.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Juniper Woods Plan of Lots Revised Easement Plan as shown on drawings prepared by Civil Environmental Consultants, Inc., dated May 13, 2020 for 271 Hartland LLC, Juniper Woods, subject to any conditions that would have been put under, but we really put under by planning. I thought I saw something in here.
There were four.
Huh?
Four conditions.
Four conditions, yeah.
I'll second that, but I don't believe the drawings are by Civil Environmental Consultants. It looks like Keith's.
Keith, I'm sorry. That's my mistake.
Oh, true.
As long as you don't want it to be Keith's, I'll second it.
No, that's fine.
That's, that's accurate.
Can I ask two questions, please, before we vote? First of all, if we do revise all these lot lines, I'll ask my standard question. The residents will at some point get a survey so they know where their lot lines are.
Yes.
Hartland, I've had that experience. They need to be sure where their property begins and ends. Related to Manor Way, do we, can we approve that the way it's drawn now with that issue still open?
Yes.
As to how that potentially will figure out?
Oh, yes. We are making progress, slow but sure, on acquiring that this drawing matches up with the, with the drawing that we provided. Mr. Brejdehan, turn to the right way we intend to acquire.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution amending Peters Township Transportation Capital Improvement Plan.
So one of the exercises that we do each year is to review the traffic impact fee capital improvement program and to, for the purposes of updating it. This work is largely done by our traffic engineer. What you will see is the most significant change in the traffic improvement plan is a proposal to include a new project, and that project would be a signalized intersection at the entrance of the existing high school. And the reason why this comes up is that we are in preliminary discussions with a developer who intends to develop this piece of property here, which will connect on through. There are, in that proposed plan, there are a number of townhouses, and in addition to that, there is another senior care facility being proposed. We believe that at that point, that PennDOT is going to require that that intersection be signaledized, and they're going to require turning lanes. By including this, we will be able to capture the impact fees that are going to be paid by that developer if in fact this gets built, and use that towards doing this project. And as anybody knows, and I'm not sure these turning lanes will necessarily solve that problem, but as anybody knows with the high school, East McMurray backs up on a regular basis as people attempt to enter that facility.
Wouldn't the developer of that property have to put that road in? Wouldn't they have to do that if they wanted to develop that piece of property?
Oh, they will. And, and the traffic impact fees that they will pay will only be a small portion of what that project will cost. So in addition to the traffic impact fees that we, we would allocate to that, they would have a significant contribution because that project is.
I thought you were asking us to do it, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that by putting, well, we, and we've done this with other locations, and the one that comes to mind is Dollar Bank. We incorporated that as a project, and what it allowed the developer to do is to take the money that is allocated as traffic impact fees and apply it to a portion of the cost of doing this overall improvement. So.
Why would we do that? I mean, let him put the road in, and if he does, we'll get the impact fees. Why should we add it?
If you, if you don't add this as a project to the capital improvement program, he will not, he will not be able to apply those, those traffic impact, his traffic impact fees that he's paying to this project. It won't be permitted.
Well, you're not asking.
So the project won't go through?
I don't know whether it goes through or not. The, you know, I guess that all depends upon, he'll be required to pay traffic impact fees that we will use elsewhere in the community, and then he'll be required to do this improvement as well, because I, I don't know what it is, but I don't think they'll allow him to do this.
Are we doing this for his benefit? That's my question.
What's that?
Are we doing this for his benefit? Because he's getting a credit for the impact fees that we would get anyway if he developed it, correct? Or am I wrong?
This would, this would, I guess, the short answer, I guess, would be yes. I mean, what you're doing is making it possible for him, for whoever the developer is, to be able to use those fees in conjunction with additional fees that he'll have to pay to be able to accomplish this.
So, I mean, why should we be doing them a favor? If, if they don't want to put it in, that's not a bad thing. It's going to keep a lot of traffic off that road. I mean, why should we, so, you know, we're always complaining about how much traffic there is in this township, and we could just say no, we're not going to do that. If you want to put it in, you pay for it, and we'll get, we'll get our traffic impact fee. If that's a deterrent to them developing that property, maybe that's a good thing for the township.
Well, and in which case, what I would recommend you do is to approve the traffic impact fee plan and eliminate this project.
Is this, could I ask, is this similar to the issue? Is this similar to the issue that we had when we were talking about Phoenisha and Bebop Road?
Phoenisha and.
Project, Phoenisha Hills Project. Yeah, with the realignment.
Well, what, yes, because the difference is, this would be an eligible project if we included it. What was at Phoenisha and Bebop is not an eligible project.
Right.
And so therefore, all of that cost would have gone back on to the developer, and that proved to be more than that development sustained.
So, so every development, it seems like more and more, every development that's being planned, we need to look at how it's impacting these two lane roads. We had the same issue with Sugar Camp with the, the project there as to whether we're putting a roundabout or what we're doing in the front of that plan. You know, I kind of appreciate what Frank and Gary are saying. I think in the long term, it's going to have to be improved. I think from the high school perspective, at some point, if they do end up moving the football field, chances are they're going to want to try to offload property, and something else could develop off of East McMurray Road. You know, I mean, I, so I think something's going to need to be done, but I kind of agree. I'm not sure we know what that is right now.
Where was my idea? The proposed conceptual plan shows Italian, Marion, as well as Crest Hill and Eastern Mary. So the impacts there, so that's my issue. That's not the only place there's going to be impact, so.
Well, I can tell you right now, when that comes in front of us, I'm going to fight about a connection to Crest, because all that's going to do is direct everyone down Pleasant Avenue onto 19.
So, so that's another question then. If this doesn't get approved now, is it going to actually hurt the neighborhoods behind worse with volumes of traffic?
It's going to stay in San.
Okay.
Yes, he's going to have to get the East McMurray Road.
That's true, right. I'm just thinking of the timing.
But is there another entrance from this plan down into East McMurray, further down towards the crossroads?
There potentially could be the senior care facility, so there would be another access to East McMurray.
That would be worse, somewhere I could cross where you come down from Heritage Meadows. Yeah. That'd be a light there then, too?
No. And again, those plans are conceptual in nature, and whether they ever get built or not, I don't know. At some point in time, this property's going to develop, and this kind of, we're going to try to get this kind of alignment where you have a plus intersection at that location.
If that, if that happens, would he be responsible for just the intersection, and then the rest of it would be on the township with the turning lanes and all that?
No, no, this, this would be, I think what will happen is PennDOT will require something that looks like this. Don't you agree?
I agree. I don't think you'll get a highway occupancy permit without turning lanes on East McMurray Road.
Now, if they put a football field there and everything else, you may even find longer turning lanes.
No.
That's the question, is are those turning lanes now taking into account the traffic that the high, the current high school puts on there because of all the students driving the school? Is that going to be impacted with that being a middle school then?
Well, this is only, this is only a conceptual drawing. What is going to be required in terms of turning lanes will be, will be determined by PennDOT when someone files for a highway occupancy permit. So, you know, all of the drawings, and we've done this with, in fact, when we were over off of Sugar Camp Road, what's in the, the traffic improvement capital program are conceptual drawings. They are not engineered drawings, and. capital, uh, program are conceptual drawings. They are not engineered drawings, and what will happen here will have a lot to do with what PennDOT tells the developer he's, will require.
So just so I'm clear, the Traffic Impact Committee recommended this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 11-04-20, amending the Peter's Township Transportation Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Other discussion?
Is this adding this or not?
Right, he's, he's making the motion to add it.
Okay.
This is, the motion includes that.
Yes.
Right, and it has nothing to do with the fee at this point.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, second one is I'll make a motion that we adopt.
One second.
Is that 4-3?
I thought it was 4-3.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was in a.
Are you in a?
Yeah. It's my, uh, I also make a motion to adopt ordinance number 859, amending the Peter's Township Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Discussion. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, uh, vacancy on Peter's Township Park and Recreation Board.
I just, uh, wanted to point out to you that, uh, Mr. Repetti has decided that he is not going to continue to serve on the Parker Recreation Board after his term expires. We've been in contact with the school district because this is one of the, the positions on the board that, um, is recommended by the school district and appointed by council. So, um, I know they're out advertising for this position, so you'll see that probably in December or January.
Okay, next one's a request from Peter's Township School District to waive building permit fee.
Move. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Payroll and bills.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I reviewed the payroll and bills. The constant payable is, the run is just under $2 million due to the number of bond payments and payments for COVID-related expenses that are being submitted under the CARES funding, uh, as well as operating in capital we've approved previously. I reviewed the invoices and pay report. The charge account summary is included. I'm seeing at the same time you are, if anyone has any questions, we can ask Mr. Lawer about that. Are there any questions? If not, I move that we approve the bills as presented and pay them.
Second.
Discussion. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Correspondents?
Uh, there's a letter in your docket that talks about the, um, construction on, uh, on the bridge replacement on McDowell Lane. Um, the signs will be posted for construction, restriction commencing on December 7. The detour is scheduled to last, uh, through the summer of 2021. Um, the North Carolina Fire Department and the, and the Peter's Township Fire Department have been working together to come up with a plan, uh, to be able to address emergencies in that area.
So long detour.
Oh, they're going to put the sign, you know, letting you know that that's going to occur up by rot 19?
I'm hoping, but I don't know.
Like a lot of times, they put it down by the bridge, and people already go down.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know that. I'm hoping that that's the case.
Yeah.
We can check.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, do you drive all the way down there? It's like, you can't do that.
I see that all the time. Drive all the way down, it's closed.
Yeah, and no place to turn around.
Okay, reports? Anybody want to talk about any of the reports?
I did have a question for Mr. Zamidis.
Wow.
First of all, um, it seemed like the changeover from the East McMurray split went smoothly. Were you satisfied with everything?
It was extremely difficult. Very difficult to figure really, you know, they work like $30, $30 continuous operations.
Any negative feedback from the residents in that area?
No.
Good.
Um, yeah, I'm shocked about that.
I thought it went, I thought it went well.
Yeah, it seemed like it. The question I had was about the school district, the property at Rolling Hills, and you referenced the, um, subdivision plan was going to be, uh, the deeds drafted, and it was going to be recorded. So will that come back to council for approval so we can see where everybody's lines line up?
Yeah, and then we'll probably be next, we, uh, maybe the second meeting is the same.
Thank you.
Okay, miscellaneous?
I just wanted to bring this back. This is, you know, with, you know, the Lutz Farm development had come to council. We had tabled action on it, uh, with the idea to find out whether or not, uh, there was a way to improve the plan by aligning the entrances on either side of Thomas Road. Um, to the credit of the developer and his engineer, uh, they worked with the planning department and were able to do that. I think, quite honestly, this is a, from the township's perspective, on, uh, this side particularly, I think this is a much better alignment. Um, what I think it allows for is that this become, uh, a road to pass traffic from the other side of town back.
Could be more.
And the other thing that they did at the, at the top of it, because I know there was a concern about, you know, that's where two pieces of property kind of join together. They've given us a wider, uh, area as a right-of-way there so that, in fact, regardless of which property would come in, you'd have a way to get onto that property with, and you couldn't be held up by, by, uh.
A lane.
Property area, yeah.
That was Mr. Coz.
Yeah, that was my concern. I am very excited about the way this plan looks now.
Yeah.
The idea right now have a nice, common intersection with Thomas Road. It's wonderful. I'm very excited.
And, um, from the developer's standpoint, this has actually worked out to his benefit as well, too, I think, so.
See, everybody won.
Everybody won on this one. Uh, one thing that, uh, we did run into a small problem, and we just got notice of this the day. As you will remember, council approved, uh, Mr. Ball executing a highway occupancy permit to allow the connection of storm sewers, uh, from this development into the PennDOT system. Um, PennDOT has no problem with that. They have a problem with our process, and what they need is a resolution passed, uh, authorizing Mr. Ball to act on behalf of the township. So with that, I would recommend that the council, and I realize you haven't seen this except for it sitting up at your desk, um, uh, to act on a resolution authorizing, uh, Mr. Ball to.
So move. Second.
Discussion. In favor?
Resolution number, that's all you need.
1105, I think I missed.
Okay.
Are we voting?
I'm just looking for the resolution. For 1105, is it?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, scheduled for December?
Well, my question to council is, when we started the year, what we had said was that we would have, um, our final meetings on the 14th and the 21st. Um, Ryan and I both believe that we will be in a position to have the, um, the budget ready for approval on the 14th. So I guess my question to you is, is your preference to meet, uh, continue to meet on the 14th and the 21st, or meet earlier in the year, early in the month? The other thing that I would tell you that, um, we would like to have a workshop meeting with council on a, on either next Monday, or if we're not meeting on the 7th, on the 7th, for the purpose of, uh, talking about, um, roadways and talking about, um, issues we're having with, um, uh, getting developments completed. So, so my question to you is, do you want to continue to meet on the 14th and 21st?
I don't see any reason to move the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then can we have a schedule workshop on the 7th then?
Fine.
Okay. Might as well finish the year off with a flourish.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, items for the next agenda? Uh, wait, one, one, I wanted to point out that, uh, the road crew did clean up the trees along Center Church Road. Much improved. I don't know why it took so long to get that done.
Well, you know, I think the problem is, Jim, that a lot of times people think that we see everything, and we don't. And when people, uh, point these things out, we, I, we find a way to address them. So I thank you for pointing that out to us.
Now, what about the one on, what, what, one on Thomas?
On Thomas Road, we have once again been in touch with, uh, PennDOT, whose responsibility.
So the homeowner won't do anything?
Oh, I don't think, yeah, I don't think you're going to be the homeowner.
And, and, but you haven't been in contact with PennDOT?
Again.
Weren't we having some issues with the owners of that property on Center Church?
As you will recall, there are some issues with regard to the ownership of that property and the, and the status of the people who, who live there. And we were prepared to begin to move on that, but quite frankly, uh, in light of the COVID situation, and now we're back to winter, um, I, I don't know that, that now's the time to seek, to get the people out of that, that structure. So my intention was, unless council tells me differently, was to wait till the weather breaks, um, next year and begin the process of.
That's what I think. I thought that, that property was up for tax sale.
Uh, no, no, they, the, the people who live there consistently go to the Tax Claim Bureau in the fall and pay their taxes.
Okay.
Was there, was there some issue with it being a fire hazard, or am I remembering that incorrectly?
Oh, it's, I think, quite frankly, and this is, and this is the, you know, the concern is, I don't think that those structures are necessarily safe, but the, the thing is, for the people who live there, they are shelter in the winter. And so it's, it's, yes, it's, it's a safety concern, too.
Let's just wait till weather breaks and.
Oh, yeah.
Do what we got to do, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to basically second Mr. Burke's comment about the, the trees, but really, it was a much bigger issue with regard to the storm damage from a week ago Sunday that I think the road crews to be commended for.
Yes.
Cleanup and assistance as well as picking up branches from neighbors' properties and things.
Yeah, there were a lot of, a lot of branches and trees down.
You know, were we the ones that, uh, cut up that oak that, uh, fell on Center Church last week?
Yes, I think we did.
Okay, items for the next agenda. Seeing none?
We have a brief executive session.
We have a brief executive session.
Happy Thanksgiving.